Good evening, everybody. We are going to get started. Kevin is parking and he will be in as soon as he gets in. So we'll start with our opening comments. The format for tonight will be three minutes each candidate for opening comments. And then each question they'll have three minutes. And if it warrants it, they'll have a two-minute response time. And then we will go through our questions. And we have a number of user submitted questions, reader submitted questions. And we will get through as many of those as possible. And about 8:15, 8:20, we'll turn it over to three-minute closing comments. So we'll finish up between 8:30, 8:45. So with that, we will also start at this end of the table, go through, and then every question will alternate who starts the question. So for opening comments, we will start with Rick.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rick Efferchase. I'm the Director of Newport City Downtown Development. I'm a three-year resident of Northern Vermont and a lifelong visitor to my family that comes from the town of Lowell. I've spent all my life coming back to Lowell as our place to gather as a family. And about 15 years ago, built a cabin on my folks' property there for our family, my wife's and my family to vacation in. And when the pandemic happened and my wife and I lost our jobs down in the Lower Hudson Valley, where we were co-directing a conference center, that was the wrong business to be in in a pandemic. We made the decision that since our kids were grown, we could afford to move where we wanted. And we came home to the place I'd never actually lived full-time. So we've been there for about three years. We've just moved into Newport about a month and a half ago. When I arrived here, I had a couple of remote jobs that I expected would keep me busy. And instead, I ended up saying yes to a 10-hour-a-week position with Newport City Downtown Development that's now morphed into 30 hours a week and is clearly the passion of my life at this point. And I just want to tell a quick story about, because I think it exemplifies really why I've decided to run for city council. About six months after I started in that position, I said to Sarah Chadburn, who is a lifelong resident of the Northeast Kingdom and was on our board at the time, "Feels like what we're really missing in this conversation is young adults. Where are they?" And she said, "Well, I'm part of the NEK Young Professionals Group, and so I know some." And I asked her if she would invite them to come together so we could have a conversation about what we needed in Newport. So we all got together at the warehouse one night. And I didn't know any of the people in the room except Sarah that night. And I just said, "I'm going to sit here with my laptop, and I'd like you all to answer the question, what's missing in Newport that you wish existed?" And the folks ruminated about that, brainstormed together. We agreed to meet again a month later. And we began meeting every month at the warehouse for drinks and chatting time. And we became friends. And within a few months, we'd come up with the ideas for the Foundation for Winter Saturdays, which has turned into quite a thing. Tomorrow night will be our last one for this season. And really, it's all about the, I call it kind of the soul of Newport City Downtown Development, because it's helped all of us to understand what might be possible if we really place community events that draw people from all over the region, the same way my family from Lowell has traditionally been drawn to this community. If we put them all together and invite people to come in, then we have real possibilities for this community. And it's fun. It's just really fun. We have 100 people plus showing up most weeks at the Gateway Center for those events. And it's led to many, many more activities and conversations. And together, I'm pretty convinced, we could all be making those kinds of things happen. So I'm very excited about that and looking forward to the conversation tonight.
All right. Linda?
Hi, everybody. My name is Lori Grimm. I'm a 17-year resident of Newport. And my husband and I moved here when he took a job at North Country Union High School. Our kids were in elementary school and have come up through all the schools here. And from the time we moved in, I started getting involved in things, what was going on in Newport. And one of the first conversations I actually had about looking at something in Newport was actually with Trish Sears, who was at the time the director of what was then called the Newport City Renaissance Committee, which is the first iteration of what is now Newport City Downtown Development. And from that, I started going to the committee studies, the community studies that were held. And I was involved with that. I was involved in the kids' school, IROC swim team, sporting events, everything. And what I really loved was finding out, meeting people in Newport, finding out what a great community we live in. Because I don't think you can actually come to a place like this without getting involved. I hear so many times that there are individuals who come here for a job or whatever, they come with family, and they're here for a year or two or three, and then they leave. And the question is, why are you leaving? And they don't find anything to do. And I always question that, because there's always something to do here. It might not be right in Newport proper, but it is going to be in the area. One summer, my husband and I had an opportunity to literally spend, oh, I think it was two or three nights a week at the high school. One entire summer into the fall. It was a great experience. And I'm looking forward, the reason I'm choosing now to run for city council is because I've been asked for years and years by my friends to run. And life events, other situations have just kept me unable to do that. And now just seems the right time. I'm looking forward to seeing what our city can be. We have come through a lot of change, and it's time to continue moving us forward. And I'm really looking forward to being a part of that and working with the other members of the city council.
All right. Hello. Perfect timing.
How you doing, Kevin?
I apologize, everybody. Sorry.
No worries. All right. So Carl, are you ready? All right, three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carl King. I've been here just about 33 years. I started out in the National Guard here in Newport, and then I went active duty. I came back, I was gone for the night, and I came back in 2000. And I worked at Chaput Farms for a couple of years, and I worked at Jordan Farm. I went to construction. I worked on roof siding and so on and so forth. And in May of 2005, I fell off the roof and was quite injured. So that kind of retired me. And it put me in a different mindset of where I can be useful, not only to myself, but my community. Now, my legs weren't working quite right at that time, but my brain was working, and I wanted to apply that to my community. It made me feel good to have a purpose and a direction, but also to help build myself up to be a better person, but also I want to better my community. I do things in this community. I've joined a lot of charitable organizations, Eagles, the Elks. I'm a veteran, so I'm a member of the Legion. And these are all charitable, and we do works in the community. Sometimes they're not as blatant and right up front, but I'm out there. And one thing I like to tat about myself is I'm what they call boots on the ground. I really do things in this community. I've had homeless people in my home. I feed people. I hear them. I try to solve their problems, help them go through things. I give them rides to veterans and seniors, to grocery stores and doctors' appointments. These are the things I do. I don't charge, and I don't brag about myself. These are the things that my heart tells me to do. I have a servant's heart. And I want to bring that to the community. I've been, in my career with the military, I've been to a lot of places and experienced a lot of things. I've seen a lot of successful models and a lot of failures. And I believe I can bring that to the council and be an asset to the community. As I've always said, I'm always about Newport. I'm not on either side. It's always about Newport, better myself, and my community. And certainly, if you're not coming to the table with that, you don't belong at the table. Thank you.
All right. Set.
So I'm Andrew Touche. I grew up in Mooresville, moved to Orleans County 22 years ago, and then bought a house on the Lake Road in Newport eight years ago. I really started paying attention to the council in the city, really digging in about five years ago. And I really, I really want to bring unity to the board. Right now, it seems to be there's a big divide amongst the councilmen. And it just seems very uncertain. All of the, 90% of the comments, it comes from the public, which is great, but there's no discussion had amongst the board members themselves prior to any motions being made or any voting. There's very little discussion. And I find it hard to believe that there's a lot of understanding of all of the motions that are being made. And I think that there needs to be more discussion amongst the councilmen or ladies. And I just feel that there's that big need. And I feel that I am the person that can help do that. Thank you.
Kevin?
My name is Kevin Charbonneau. I'm currently on the council. I'm up for reelection. I was born in Burlington, Vermont. My first job brought me to Derby, and I've been here for 36 years. I retired from the state police as a patrol commander, sergeant patrol commander. When we, I did spend five years in Lemoyle County. Years back, you kind of had to transfer and spend some time in what they call an outpost for promotion. So I did that in Lemoyle. We came back, and we've been living in the same house since 98. I volunteered with the Boy Scouts, became a scout master. My two sons have gone to college. They're now out living on their own, still in Vermont. When, that's how I actually became first, how I first became involved with the council. Part of their rank advancement was to go to municipal meetings. And so going there is interesting. And later on, I followed up with that, of joining the council. I'd like to continue. I think in the past six years, a lot has changed in the nation. We've had COVID, and for some reason, that's changed everything. The one thing that I'm very proud of is Newport survived relatively unscathed. We had a good infrastructure, our police department. You know, we didn't have a defund of police. They remained intact. And currently, it's one of the fully staffed departments in the state. I think there may be
30 seconds.
There may be a handful of others, but that's something that's good for Newport.
Okay. Got my questions up here. Does it work? Technology? All right. So the first question is, why do you think you would make a good city council member? And we will start with Lori.
Why do I think I'll make a good council member? Well, one of the things I pride myself on is being able to listen to people, make a good understanding of what it is that we're talking about, that I am able to have good discussion with most people, even if we are on opposite sides of a particular issue. And I've been told that I am a very good question asker. And what I mean by that is that I'm not afraid to ask the questions, because it's important for us to be able to ask the right questions to get to the answers that we really need. And I'm, that's what I want to do with the council. I think that what we've seen is a situation in the last several years where that's just not been possible. And I'm ready to sit down, have some good conversation, see where our city can go, look at the things that the council has done, that the council is going to be doing, and really take that to heart and look at exactly what we can do for our city and our taxpayers and the people of our town.
All right. Carl?
What I can bring to the council certainly would be a knowledge base. I have been around, again, I have seen successful models of cities and failures. And with that, I do have communication skills as well. I'm sure everybody has communication skills. But with that, also I bring a balance, too. I'm not the type to be bullshit, and I'm not going to baffle anybody. It is straight down the line Newport business. And we need to keep that in line. And I believe people have lately have really elevated city council as a person as much more than what they really are. There's only a certain scope of what they can do and the powers they have. If you try to usurp any of that, you're tainted and you're conflict of interest. It is, again, about Newport. And I'm trying to provide that equal balance, where there should be difference of opinions, but it should always be a council, not a clique.
I think I would fulfill that role as, because I'd be a servant of the people. And I hold people accountable, completely transparent. And I feel that if I am on the board, that I can work very well with any one of these people here, as well as the current council and the mayor, and move forward. There seems to be a lot of negativity going back and forth, and I desperately, I definitely think that this is a time in a place where, you know, that's not necessarily needed. And we need to get past that. And the only way to get past that is to move forward and work as a team for the people. Thank you.
Kevin?
In my career, I've worked with numerous communities. I've seen how they work. I've seen how the departments work and how they work together. For example, accident scenes, you see the ambulance and the fire department coming together. One thing I can bring to the council, and I think that I have, is our infrastructure is intact. Our departments work well together. They have excellent leadership. And they provide a good community for Newport. Our, excuse me. That is our primary role as council. If you look in the charter, that is essentially what we are to do. Make a stable infrastructure, spend money wisely and not excessively. And I think in this time, we have done that well. We haven't spent money foolishly, made wise investments, and we're looking to the future as we continue on. I like to think I can work with other people. I don't easily get riled up. And if I need to find information, I'll find it. I'm not afraid to, I'll ask, get the truth. You can't always rely on information that may or may not be given to you from one source.
All right, next question.
I need to go through.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's going to catch me up, so please just remind me.
We'll just stay on top of it. No worries.
Thank you. All right. Rick?
I've spent a now nearly 40-year career building strong community organizations that are built on collaboration. And every time I've done it, it's always been about us, not about me or about any other one person. And those are the kinds of organizations that endure over time. So when I was called to come in and begin to work to help rebuild NCCD post-COVID, you know, it was clear to me that I didn't have a lot of experience in economic development work. And in fact, I said that to the board. And they said, "Well, what we really need right now is someone who knows how to rebuild a small nonprofit and get people impassioned again and excited and involved and run a clean and transparent organization." So I said, "That's what I've been doing all my life." And that's what brought me into town. And then I became passionate about economic development. And I've spent the last two years studying how communities turn around. When they have opportunities in front of them, what is it that they have to do to actually make things happen? And, you know, it seems to me that that's dependent on a savvy council and mayor that works in tandem with the city leadership, the city staff, and with the businesses in the community and the residents in the community to build a strong sense of where we're headed together, and then to try and implement that community vision together. So that's really what I think it's all about. And I've got all kinds of specific ideas, because our work with NCCD puts those ideas in front of us all the time. But really, at the end of the day, what's most important is how we get there together.
All right. All right. Next question. As a resident of Newport City, what have you seen that is working? And Carl, you will start with you.
The things that I've seen of working, I see the direction that we want to go in a recreational kind of, we want to turn this into a northern paradise, is what I see. And that's a great direction. That's going to bring out-of-staters in to come visit and also bring revenue, I would imagine, if we stay on that track. The infrastructure, as Kevin has mentioned, that's definitely the first thing you really need to do is have a secure infrastructure and order to build upon. Without a good, solid foundation, you can never build upon it. It will be weak or critical. So that, we have that availability. And with most of them, there are either updated or new items. So that allows for longevity of these services, which is really attractive, to potential developers and business. I think, well, it's pretty apparent, these past few elections here, we're fighting for something, and it should only be for Newport. It should never be for any other special interest. It should never be for the benefit of friends. So I think if we can get away from that, I think we're going to be moving forward conjunctively together. We just, we just need to treat it as it's our basic core. Let's get back to the core values of Newport. Let's stop making it something that's not. We need to be Newport and then transform Newport in development to go into the future. That's it.
I think the thing that impresses me the most is the teamwork that I see by the different departments within the city as far as getting tasks done, getting jobs done. You know, the, you know, DPW is doing, I feel they're doing a great job with their, with the snow and removal and snow plowing this winter. With the staffing issues that they've been faced, I think they're doing great. I know the police department, last night, we had the forum there. We're one of the only full-time departments in the state right now, 24/7, and he's fully staffed. I think they've done a great job there, and I think that's very, something to be very proud of. And it's just, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Kevin?
Since I've been here and on the council, 2018, the city has made major improvements. We, the east side water tower had failed years before in a vote. And why that was necessary was that really was, without it, construction couldn't have happened. We were dependent on Derby for water, and we still are. And they really kind of told the purse strings, so to speak, by saying how much water we can have and what we can do. This new water tower will not only provide the foundation for development, but it will also supply much-needed water pressure on the east side. We have, before, I guess it was just kind of chaotic in terms of parades or special events. There was no uniform policy. Sometimes the council would give $500 here or $1,000 there, but nothing uniform. We've developed policies so across the board, people know what to expect. We know what we're looking for, and it doesn't show any favoritism one to the other. The state of Vermont spent a few years regarding marijuana. They weren't sure. We came up with an ordinance just because we didn't know what was happening. Eventually, they kind of made it legal to begin with. It was really messed up. As a council, we got a really good presentation from somebody that wanted to start a business. We said, "That would be great." And we, you know, instead of just having an ordinance, we'll let it go to the people at a town meeting. And they voted to approve it.
30 seconds.
Then the ordinance is nullified. We did that, and a majority of the residents are now on it. So we solved the marijuana ordinance. There has been numerous projects that everybody has seen, the flowers, the park lot, bluffside trails, the beach improvements.
Time's up. Rick?
So in the two and a half years I've been in the job here, I've been extremely impressed with the city staff. The department heads know their work, they care deeply about what they're doing. They're uniformly attempting to be helpful every time they're asked. And, and so I can't speak highly enough about our, our city staff that exists and is in place right now. We've got strong businesses, several of which have been here for now several generations that are the backbone of this community, looks like pick and shovel and built by Newport. And, and some of those that weren't homegrown but have been here a very long time, like Columbia. Yesterday, I spent two hours doing a tour with Terry Payton over at Galvion. And those businesses are the heart of our downtown and our whole community. It's those businesses that are going to be the foundation upon which we've got to build, where we go from here. I think our hospital is critically important to this community. The fact that we've got it is part of what makes this community such an important hub for the entire region here in northern Vermont. And then, you know, two and a half years ago, as I stepped in, I was invited into a conversation called, that was titled, "The Rural Tourism Academy." And it was a group of folks who were talking about how Newport's rural tourism academy, rural tourism economy could be built out. And one of the things they really helped us to understand in that series of conversations that took place over a few months was that in, a generation ago, the conversation was almost entirely about promoting your downtown or your, not just your downtown, but your, your environment, whatever it is that you think is gonna draw people to the area. And then the conversation became more oriented toward managing that resource. So that when people came, they would actually have access to it and you wouldn't turn it into Disneyland, right? And then the conversation has shifted again in the last few years to stewardship. How do we actually steward the resource of the lake, in our case, right? And the community character upon which this community has depended for many, many years so that we have something to, 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 to build upon in the years to come. So it seems to me that that's something that we're really working on right now that builds on the community values that this community's depended on for a very long time, how we steward all of that together. And then finally, the last piece I would mention is, there's a strong network of nonprofit and community organizations here that are working at almost every aspect of the kind of community life. And I think those are critically important organizations. I'm glad to be working in partnership with them.
So I would actually have to agree with most of what's already been said. But what I want to say is what I've seen that's really working is the community at large. We have such a diverse group of people who love to work together and love to do things together. And we see that across the board with the map, with the people who use the, the bluffside trails that was mentioned and all the work that went into that, with our, with the downtown groups, our businesses. When you move here and you take stock in where you live, then that's what makes the community better. And so we have a great hospital. You know, I have friends who've had difficult situations there, but it really is a good hospital. And like Rick said, we are very fortunate to have it and we need to make sure that we keep it here. Because what would we be if everybody had to get on the interstate and drive forty-five minutes to go to the hospital? It would be very difficult for most people. And so that's what I've seen that really is working here. We have like-minded people who may not always agree on everything, but we are working on a daily basis, I believe, to, to just take Newport to a different level.
Seeing where I started, just making sure I got everybody for that question.
Paul's no, cool.
Next question. Yeah, I'm having some technology difficulties. So in contrast to that question, what would you like to see change in Newport? And should you be elected, how would you work towards being a part of those changes? And Andrew, we'll start with you.
Well, it's, it's not really a change, but I, we, we have to bring, we have to bring more housing to the community, to the, to the city. Because without has, without housing, the jobs aren't gonna be here as well. So we really need to, to update the infrastructure, the, the housing market, make it, make it viable, show interest, so it brings interest in, for people. Right now, two or three weeks ago, there was very little on the market for the city. But there's a lot of different areas, and I know that the Rural Edge is doing their project, or, or getting, going through that right now. But there, there's a lot more that needs to be done in that aspect. And I think until we can bring housing to the area, we're not gonna bring the people to the area for the businesses. And, you know, and that's what we need. We need to bring attraction in with housing. And then they can, we can bring the development in with Rick's, you know, with Rick's assistance and so on. Thank you.
Kevin.
They're not really changes, but things that need to be done. Look, let me correct myself. I'd like to see some changes. I'd like to see less animosity at the council meetings. I mean, certainly people have differing opinions, but we also need feedback as opposed to just criticism. But going forward, we, we need to do, as a council, what we need to do best, or what we do best per our charter. And that's continue with what we've done on the infrastructure. Finish the water tower. That's underway, we signed a contract with that. The bandstand, that's, needs to change. We have, there's a committee that's doing phenomenal amount of work on it. That should be, we should see progress in that. We need to somehow change or encourage people to get water meters. That is a problem that affects our, our ability to accurately bill people. We have the Gardner Park. There was plans for that, the playground. Contaminated soil was found. We, as a city, need to address that. How we can change moving forward is addressing the needs. And as we see what's happening in our surrounding communities, mildly change our departments to address needs that will prevent that from happening here. I'm talking specifically about drug use. Travis Bingham is very, very smart. And he's changing how he's gonna be doing things. One of them was, he has a SRO back at the high school. And that's a.
Thirty seconds.
It's a significant change. And in fact, last night, we heard the captain from the VSP say, "A law enforcement in schools was needed." We're ahead of the ball on that.
All right, Rick.
I think I would reframe the question slightly. It's not so much from my perspective, the question, what has to change is what, what are the challenges and opportunities that are in front of us next? And the challenges are pretty clear to me. We have a downtown that has been.
Yeah, I think you should answer the question like everybody else and not change it. If you've been here long enough.
Carl, it's, it's my opportunity to speak. Thank you. So I guess what I'm saying is, there's a special kind of attention and attitude and energy that needs to be brought by the council and the mayor and our city staff and all of us right now to try and address the long-term challenges that we're confronting in our downtown. We have development issues that don't just revolve around the Spates Block. There are empty storefronts, there are underutilized buildings, there are buildings that are worn out and used up and being used for inappropriate purposes because they're no longer serviceable. And all of those things together need to be considered and developed into a strategic plan that we can then begin to work on step by step to move us from here to the kind of community that we want to create. We have great examples out there that we can look to. St. Albans, I think, has done a remarkable job over the last fifteen years of turning their downtown that was sorely neglected into a place that they can be proud of. St. J has gone through a similar transformation in the last ten years or so. And that work doesn't happen overnight. It's work that takes a long time to build, but we have to do it intentionally and carefully together.
Change. I actually think that we've been in a state of change now for almost a year. And I think we need to embrace that change. We've been through a lot in this last almost twelve months. And we have a mayor now who has, dare I say, the right connections with the state, who is, who is able to move us forward when it comes to the airport. We have, we have some things that are going on here to look at grants. We've had a great council. I particularly thank anyone who has been willing to serve on the city council. Like I said, I've had people ask me for ten years to run. And I never felt it was the right time. And if you look at this, five people running for two seats. And my understanding is there were actually more people who were considering to run this time for city council than are not. So I think we're already in a state of change. And I think we need to grasp onto that change instead of looking back, instead of talking about new people coming in and taking over, because that's not the point. The point is everyone is a resident here and everyone should have an opportunity to look forward and to move our city forward. And so change, we're already in it. And we need to, we need to take that opportunity to look at our housing, to look at the state of things that are going on, to bring in the businesses, to go after the things that we need to build up our community. We cannot stay the same. We've been this way for a long time. And we can do it properly if we do it together. I know some communities in, where I'm from, and there are things going on there because of a business that's coming in that is changing the landscape, and I don't mean in a very good way. And I'm concerned for them. But we have an opportunity to grasp the things that we can work with, with the things that NCDD is doing, with grants that are possibly coming in and those things. And we can take those things as a council and, and as a city and a community and move those things forward.
Laurie, you bring up a good point about, I believe we are in the midst of a change. But the biggest change I'd like to see is the perception of Newport and the perception of the city council. Before anything is going to be achieved, we need to have security, balance, and trust and transparency in that. That needs to change. I believe there's some changes developing and, and coming. But that's first and foremost. Without overcoming that barrier, everything else would be useless. I mean, no one would want to come in and do anything with the city if we're in turmoil all the time. So we definitely need to change that perception. We need to embrace community leaders to step up. For example, Laurie, you would be a great community advisory group leader to, to bring issues up in a community and, and, and advise the community of what's going on. Rick, you are best at the job that you're doing right now. I think you would be doing yourself and Newport a disservice because you can't talk as much at the council as you can in the job that you're doing most effectively. You said three times, "I am very passionate, my passion is, and always will be, downtown development." And I challenged you with what it should be, Newport. And that's the perception. If we do not keep the core value of Newport in that regard and not introducing conflicts, challenges, hurdles all the time, we're never going to move forward. We're always going to be stumbling and stuck in this bagmar. That's the change we need.
All right, yes, yes. One second. All right, resetting, you have two minutes to rebut that. And Laurie, he mentioned you first, so we will start with you.
Thank you, Carl, I appreciate your comments. But I want to say something. I've spent almost fifteen years coming to community meetings. And especially in the last eight to nine years, where we have reams of paper sitting on the shelves in the city manager's office that have gone absolutely nowhere because I believe that our, that our city manager and our city council did not wish to do what they needed to do. So no matter how many times.
Well, I'm agreeing with you there, for sure.
Hey, Carl, you need to let her finish.
I did, I disagree.
No ma, no matter how many times we sat down and looked at the scope of our community, had even started a community commons meeting where people came together, we could not get past the city council or the city manager's office. And so the, the, my point is, is that I think I can still do those things and sit on the city council and ask the hard questions and look at what's being brought to the, to the council to move the things that we need in, get those things in for our city. So thank you for the compliment. But my, my goal is to get on the council so we can actually do something about the things that we've been trying to do for the last ten years.
Rick.
Laurie said it well, I have nothing to add.
Okay. So we will move on and, that kind of got me off my thing for a second, so I just wanted to double check. Okay. Next question. There have been a number of upheavals over the last year that have created turmoil in city government. What do you see as ongoing specific issues in the council? And how would you, as a council member, work to overcome those specific issues? And we will start with Kevin.
It would seem regardless of the leadership, there are people that are not happy. When we had Laura Dogan as a city manager, there is a group of people who are displeased and voiced it quite often. We have a new mayor. And we didn't, we haven't had a permanent city manager in several months. And there is another group that is unhappy. Each group has valid points, if you can put aside all the rhetoric and everything else and the personality complex. The goal, the, the problem is to move forward. We have been moving forward, keeping in mind that the council can only do so much with its limitations. We cannot develop. We cannot create programs and whatever else. Our charter is very specific on what we can do. What we have done is make Newport viable so that development can occur. Newport itself has, we've all noticed, it's become prettier. Thank you, Robert Allison. Well, there are certain things going forward that the council has done that we can do. Nobody may notice it, or they may say, wow, it's about time. It is hard to get things going. For example, the bike path bluffside trail, that was several years in the making. Proud of each. Recently, in the last couple of years, improvements have been happening there, noticeable improvements. There's been a realignment.
Thirty seconds.
Of Fife Avenue and Second Street. The reservoir's got a cover that needed to be replaced. And our city departments are funded. The equipment is being replaced on a regular cycle. And we're in a good situation to be able to accept and be able to cater towards more development.
All right. All right. Rick?
I started in my position with NCDD a couple of years ago. There were numerous people, some of them in leadership in this community, who were explicit in telling me who could be trusted and who I should speak with and who shouldn't be spoken with. And there are people in this room tonight who are on my list of people who shouldn't be spoken to. And they know that I reached out to them anyway and invited everybody I could think of, no matter who they were or what part, what role they were performing in this community, to have a cup of coffee, or, I don't drink coffee, a cup of tea, or to have lunch together. Because at the end of the day, it's my conviction that no one gets out of bed in the morning and says, "How can I mess up the world today?" Or, "What can I do to screw up Newport today?" Right? Everybody who has a passion for this community, they have that passion because they deeply care. They want to be a part of a solution. Now, we've got some built-up history of hurt feelings that run pretty deep in this community. I'm not naive about that. And it seems to me the only way to manage that is to continue to assume the best that we can possibly assume about one another and to meet as often as possible and have the most open dialogue we can possibly have with one another and to take one another seriously even when we disagree. And then when we do disagree, to do so respectfully and to make it clear that all of us, no matter where we come from on any particular issue, at the end of the day are working to try and make this community better.
Laurie?
Well, having lived through a lot of the upheavals and turmoil in probably the last five years, I would just say that I'm ready to move past it. And I think we all should be. You know, last March, there were people who sat on our council who made a decision to not run again. Our mayor made a decision to not run again. And I think that we need to look to the people who are currently in office and let them do their jobs. We can't go to city council and continue to call out this error or that error if we're not going to let them do their job. And I think that we have to understand that, as I said earlier, people here, we are a diverse community. We are not all born and raised in Newport. We have some people who've been here a month and a half. We've got some people who were born and raised here. And we need to learn to get, to work together and to put those things aside. And I'm including myself. Because I have had to face a lot of the things that I've been through in the last five years and really figure out, am I going to be able to do this? Am I going to be able to sit at the table? And honestly, I think that given the opportunity, I can sit at that table with any of the people up here, with Clark Curtis, with Chris Vaschon. I can sit and talk and do the city business because we have been through those things and we need to put those things aside. And that's what I, that's really what I want to see. And that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay.
What is the question, though?
Let me just change the pages back. Sorry, guys. Tried to use technology to my advantage today. So the question is, there have been a number of upheavals over the last year that have created turmoil in city government. What do you see as ongoing issues in the council? And how would you work with other council members to overcome those specific issues?
Well, what I really see is, again, on the council, diversified minds. But also what's driving them? What is the ultimate goal? And with that cohesiveness, I think that's going to strengthen Newport. But until we get there, that's really weak. I think we're having good changes coming about will potentially solidify that and help propel us forward.
I think there's a lot there right now. There needs to be complete transparency because it seems to be transparency when it's convenient at the current moment. And there needs to be accountability. And I know that I can do that. I can work with anyone here, but I'm going to ask those tough questions and I'm going to hold people accountable. And if you're not going to be completely transparent, you'll have no seat at the table. Thank you.
Next question. There have been, well, we'll start with Rick. There have been a number of instances where citizens have voiced concerns over transparency in city government, the number and reason for executive sessions, and over not having their questions answered. Do you see these as ongoing issues? And how, as a council member, would you work to overcome those perceptions of city government?
Yes, I think it is an ongoing issue. And it's a question of how we rebuild trust in the community. And we do that, in my judgment, by trying to be as transparent as we can possibly be as a council. So insofar as possible, my goal would be to try and keep us in open session as often as possible and to use executive session only when there are matters that must be treated confidentiality, with confidentiality. I think that, you know, in general, we ought to be aiming for an agenda that is laid out several days in advance so that the council members can prepare appropriately for whatever's coming for the council meeting that Monday night and so that the community can come to the meeting prepared to ask good questions or to raise their concerns in that meeting, in the hearings that are allowed at the beginning of the meeting. So by and large, I think we should be striving to try and create fewer surprises, more openness, and more ability for the community to engage in a way that is respectful and that hears each concern that's raised, yeah, with respect.
So first, I'll talk about the executive session because it is my understanding, and in the city council meetings that I've attended over this past year, that the executive sessions are used specifically for matters of personnel issues. And I don't believe we have any choice in that. That is what they are there for. I mean, how would you feel if your salary or your insurance or your, whatever the situation is, was brought to a public meeting like that, put on TV, and aired in front of the entire community? I know I wouldn't. I would not be comfortable with that. So I think that we have to look at what's happened in the last year. We've had changes in city government with our city manager. I think our council has had every right to have the city, the executive sessions that they've had. And I have never had a problem with those. And I think that that's what we have to remember, is that these are personnel issues. And personnel issues are a matter of privacy and they should be held in the executive sessions. Now, as far as answering the questions, you know, there is typically time at the beginning of city council meetings for community comment, for people in the community to make a public comment. And I do not believe that I have ever, maybe a couple of times that I've been to council in the last ten years, has anyone on the council, mayor included, actually even answered a question that was brought at that time. It's typically if you send in an email, if you go, and our mayor now has mayor hours a couple of days a week, that people have gone to ask questions. And I think that she's been very open about those. But I think that when you stand up to make a public comment during that period, that you shouldn't really expect an answer. I mean, you know, it would be really, I know, I have done that before. I would really like to hear what somebody thinks. But I don't think that we need to go expecting an answer during that point. If we're, if we really want an answer-
Thirty seconds.
-put it in writing and send it to the council members. And so I think that, you know, they're doing exactly what they need to do.
Certainly, as Rick said, transparency has been questioned a lot. And it should be right up front. There should be no business, Newport business, that we should not be privy to. In certain regards, as Laurie said, contractual or personnel issues. That's understandable. Other than that, all city business should be privy and spoken about in front of the public. There should be never any hurdles to get information. We shouldn't have to go through other avenues or venues to get information. It should be easily asked for and handed over. And at the same time, we should also, as a community, have the opportunity afforded to us to help council members come to a wise, balanced decision for Newport.
You guys in your discussion, in this discussion here, have said transparency multiple times. My thing is complete transparency all the time. And then with the executive sessions, I feel that they are needed, obviously, for the state of the city right now with the manager and the fire chief and so on. They're doing interviews and so on, and they're doing a lot of other stuff in there too. So those are needed. But one thing I'd like to see, and if I was to become on the council, I would ask that there would be a line item added to the agenda every week for the mayor to address the question from the prior council meeting. Because right now, that is not happening all the time. And it would be great to have an answer instead of, "Thank you for your comment," or something of that nature. Because some things go unanswered. And if it's brought up, we work for you, right? We work for the public, for the taxpayers. And we, you know, we should give that back to you. We should answer your questions, whether I go through one of us or the mayor. But, you know, it should be done. Thank you.
I agree. There needs to be transparency. Some steps we're taking, like all the attached paperwork is made available with the agenda. And I agree with what's been said. Some executive sessions are necessary for personnel issues, for hiring, for addressing performance issues, et cetera. If they're done in a legal manner. There have been some executive sessions that should not have been executive. They shouldn't even have been part of the council. What I truly hate, and I vote against it most every time, is the additions and deletions to the agenda. There should not be an addition unless it's a very time-sensitive, you gotta sign this, you know, pre-approved loan for a cruiser. We didn't know it was the end of the month or whatever. It had already been voted for and it just needed to be signed and they forgot to add it on. Okay. But things that require feedback or public input should be pre-warned. There's very few things that are emergency and time-sensitive that have to be added to the agenda. In virtually every meeting, there's been additions or deletions. I don't agree with it. I mean, the answer topics that we need to discuss, they should have been forewarned. It gives the public, gives us a chance to go through it, think about it, read it, or whatever. As I said, there are very few things that need to be done immediately. And when that happens, the public knows or is aware of it at the same moment the council is. The only difference is we have to act on it within-
Thirty seconds.
-an hour. That's not fair to you. It's not fair to us. And as I said, I vote against it each time. I'll continue.
All right.
I think it's Laurie, right?
Oh.
Didn't Mike go first that time?
You did.
Yeah, okay.
So the next question is up. I'm watching you, Tabitha.
So I'm just letting everybody know, this is the first time I've ever used this new tablet. And it's refusing to switch pages as I'm writing. So I'm trying to get away from pen and paper because it's cumbersome, but tonight, that would have been the better one.
I'm pretty good tonight.
Yeah, it kind of is. All right. So these are now all submission questions. Over the last year or so, there have been claims that information is being misrepresented to the public. As a council member, what would you do if you were to become aware of a resident or the public being misled or lied to?
Well, first of all, I think that, I'll answer the question this way. That's where research comes in. That's where conversations with the right people come in. If someone feels like that they've been misrepresented or lied to, they definitely need to go to a member of the city council. Tabitha, let me ask you a question. Are you talking about a person or a council member?
No, I feel that the public as a whole, like through city council meetings, has been lied to about where things sit, where they're at, that sort of thing.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. So yes, I think that we have to, if someone feels like they've been represented or feels like they've been lied to, it would be important to go to the mayor, to the members of the city council, write a letter. I can tell you, I've written a number of letters over the last ten years and only once, just this week, did I actually receive a response from a city council member. And I appreciated that. So I think that they have to take steps if they believe that they've been lied to about something. It is important to do the research and find out, to get to the bottom, what did the council mean? What is the situation? And, you know, that really is, for me, the best way to answer that question because I think that's what's important. You want to clarify what's going on. You want to clarify, did you mishear something? What was the misrepresentation? Could it have been an interpretation issue? And, you know, I'm just, this is very broad, okay? This is very broad. But this is how I would go about looking at those things. Because I'm not a legal person. I know how to read. I know how to interpret things. But we also have a city attorney for those things too. And if it's something that has to do with the law, if it's something that has to do with our charter, if it's something that has to do with the governance of our city, then we have a city attorney that can help us with those things. But you can't just throw up your hands and go, you know, "You lied to me," or "You misrepresented me," without asking for help and getting, and going through some channels to get some answers.
Carl?
That's in line. I'm in line with that. Certainly, there are channels to go to. First and foremost, you present yourself either at the council meeting to ask a question or in writing. And again, it's your city. You need to provide checks and balances too. You need to keep this in check and balance. If this goes awry, you know, we're all doomed. So the checks and balances are on both sides of this table. So again, if you check the information, fact-check, certainly educate yourself and understand, again, like you were saying, the meaning and what was the intent. Sometimes things do get released or said. That wasn't exactly what it was meant, but sometimes things are said quickly. That wasn't exactly what it was meant, but sometimes things are said quickly. But certainly use the channels. They're there for a reason. And if you don't feel like that's being answered, explore more, talk with the community, other council members, to find out what the next avenue would be. We all know in a, in a city, there's not a lot of checks and balances oversight for cities. So we are in charge of that. And most importantly, it is your duty to make sure everything's in checks and balances. It's your money. It's your city. It's your future.
Thank you. I, I, I agree with this, with what's been said so far. I just have to add accountability to this, right? If, if you feel that you have been wronged or given wrong information, bring it to the council, bring it to the mayor. But there has to be due diligence, right? It has to be followed up on. It can't just fall on deaf ears. It needs to be researched. All the information needs to be gathered. And people need to be held accountable for, rather, rather it be scoop, misprinting something in the paper, or rather it be said wrong. People need to be held accountable. And I'm not picking on you scoop, I just, when you said it. Thank you.
I think honesty goes hand in hand with transparency. We gotta know the topics. It gives you time to read about them, study up on them, find out what you can about them. So that if some other information is presented that's in complete conflict with everything you've got, you can either engage in a dialogue or, or find out why. I, I would hate to think that people are intentionally lying just to, for personal gain. And I don't think by hurting the city, anybody gains. So when there, there is a, I would hate to call it a lie, there's an inconsistency, find out why. And then identify it, say, "Ah, that doesn't seem correct." And again, honesty, transparency, that's how you go to find out things. Thank you.
My experience of being a part of the community, watching the council. Toward the community, I've seen it directed toward the council, I've seen it directed from members of the community toward each other, all in open meetings of the council. And I would like to see us begin to address that culture and try and heal it together. So how does that happen? When someone raises a question about that, I appreciate the, the way Kevin has reframed it because, you know, honestly, if, if you assume the best of someone, then the likelihood is that they're not intending to lie, but they've been backed into a corner, or they've said something inconsistent, and then they feel they have to try and defend it somehow. And honestly, none of us in this room, I suspect, like to be attacked. And defensiveness is a pretty honest, you know, a pretty typical reaction. So I guess what I would really say is, I would want to do that research. I'd wanna try and figure out exactly what we're talking about. And then I'd wanna really get to the heart of what the concern is. What is it, what's the problem here that we're trying to address and address it? And I'd like the folks elected to council to have enough room to operate so that they can do their work together with some level of confidence. And they can speak together openly in a public meeting where people are, are present and not worry that every word they say is going to be pounced on somehow by, you know, later that night or the next morning, right? And so it's a, it's a give and take. And I think it starts with trying to heal the culture. And it absolutely is important that we do everything we can to assure truthfulness. I believe in that. I just think the way to come at it is not so much by attacking someone as it is trying to understand what's really driving that person's statement in the first place. And what's the core problem that we're trying to get to, and how do we work together to resolve it?
Okay. So a 2019 Vermont Department of Conservation report identified Newport's wastewater treatment facility as the second highest contributor of PFAS discharge among tested facilities. Beyond that, other testing has shown high pollution levels in local water sources. And the state is continuing to test the cancerous fish in the lake. Given the lake is one of the city's and the region's most valuable assets, as a council member, how would you work to protect the lake? And would you support deeper investigations into root causes of issues? Carl.
Very good topic. It's something you can't avoid. It's around us. In some, some areas, it kind of surrounds us. It is our duty to be stewards of this water. It is a source of drinking for our neighbors. It is a source for recreation. It is a, it's a source for beauty. And without that, I dare to say that we will, you haven't seen struggles yet. And we, we are to be great stewards. We need to protect this water, this system, because we have, again, we share it. We need to get to the root causes of where, and identify what the problems are. There are groups out there who are very passionate. And their mission is to absolutely make sure that no one forgets that this is our great treasure here. And we need to save it and make sure it's treasured and protected. Because without that, again, it's, it's gonna be one of our greatest economic values and assets.
Andrew.
I, I support further research, working with the groups that are out there currently and reaching out to other cities, like, like Burlington, for example, on Lake Champlain and so on, to see what they're doing that we're not, or share ideas. Work, work with several, work with the state, work with everyone to get to the root, root cause, right? We can't fix it if we don't know where the root cause is coming from. I know there's, there's a lot of speculation. There's a lot of, of stuff with, with the landfill and so on with that. Unfortunately, the landfill is not gonna go anywhere. And it's always gonna be there. So regardless if they close it, regardless of what they do with it, it's always gonna be, you're always gonna have the leachate in the system. So I, I, I fully support further research with that. And, and I think we could use, actually utilize Casella as, as some support for that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Kevin.
In October 15th, 2018, Dump made a presentation to the city council about, at that time, Newport was taking, is it 20,000 gallons of leachate a day? The council wisely voted to stop taking leachate. There's a certain amount of negativity from the powers that be that it was, you know, hurting the city. Didn't matter. That dumping into the lake is wrong. One of the councilors was absent and she wanted to revisit that. December 17th of 2018, again, a vote, "Will the city take leachate?" I had the privilege of working, serving with Mr. Dan Ross. He's been here a few years on the lake. We both knew, regardless of what Casella's trying to tell you, what their lawyers, you can't remove everything from the water. And it's just a bad idea to pump it into the lake. We voted against it, unfortunately. The other three, the other two councilors and the mayor voted to accept it. Thank God shortly after, I think A and R came up, they said, "No more dumping in the lake." The battle is not over. And it's, Casella is a business. They answer to money. And, you know, their idea is, "We're gonna build a treatment plate, plant. We're not gonna dump it in Lake Mefumagod." A and R says, "Great. We're gonna dump it in Black River." A and R still thinks it's a great idea. That's why.
Thirty seconds.
Needs to be. No. Don't dump that in the water. We, we enjoy it, the lake for the various recreational activities. The Canadians depend on it for drinking water. We owe it to our neighbors to be vigilant about that. So I, I'm gonna vote against leachate. Sorry, anybody that may work for Casella.
Rick.
Hard to improve on that, Kevin, honestly. And so I'll just say stewardship, 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 right? Native American tradition talks about protecting, making decisions that will protect for seven generations out. And I think about that and think about the fact that my mother is fifth generation in the town of Lowell. And I couldn't possibly name her ancestors back that far. Trying to imagine seven generations forward from here is not easy. But I know that this is a place we've gotta be entirely conservative. We've gotta be thinking about what it looks like to protect this region for ourselves and our families, our kids and their kids, and their kids after them, and so on.
Okay. All right.
So admittedly, I will tell you that this is not an area that I have any expertise in. I have listened to my friends. I've been in Vermont long enough, 33 plus years, to know about many of the state. I think the name was Clean Waterways, whatever it's been over the last however many years, to hear of those initiatives. And all I wanna say is, when every community study that has happened in Newport in the last 15 years comes back and says, "The lake is your biggest asset," we have to do exactly what has been said. We have to look, we have to go back to those reports. We have to go, the city has to stand up and do something about it. My understanding is that, that since, I believe that date was 2019 that you mentioned, Tabitha, that, that if nothing's been done since then, we need to do something like yesterday. And we, and we cannot let things continue that way. Because like Rick said, we, we've gotta consider what's coming next. We've gotta consider our future. And, and the people that are gonna live here. And if, if the lake is our biggest asset, we certainly cannot continue to just push that to the other side of the table and not do anything about it.
All right. Next question. So we'll start with Andrew with this one. Given the increasing tax rates, what do you see as unnecessary factors leading to those increases? And what could be done to reduce the tax burden?
Well, this, this goes back five years ago, level funding. We, we went through several years where there was, there was minimal increases when the CPI was double and triple that in some years. So it's, it's a, it's a very tough conversation right now because obviously, in those, in that time, you've had wage increases, you've had, you know, inflation. Every, everything increases, parts, I, I mean, every, everything, food, everything. So with, with the current state of the budget going up 17%, that is, I, I feel that is very high. But if you, if you look at it over the course, you know, it, it, I was expecting it to increase more than a date over the last five years to, to help offset that. I, I do feel that there was very little conversation amongst the councilmen in regards to that. To, to the point of there was, there was no conversation. I, I looked at the budget myself. I, I, I did not go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but I would, to see where we could save. And if there is anything we can save. I, I know that there are several places that, that were dropped, you know? Prices were dropped and things were, were put aside. I know that, you know, right now, if we were, you know, everybody doesn't, you know, doesn't want, doesn't want that much of an increase. But where do we take it away? What's the easiest thing? Everybody says, "Well, take it out of capital." Well, do you want, do you want the Glenrope paved, or do you, you know, do you want it to be dirt? You know, it's, that, that's where, that's where we're at. But we need to be able to have the conversations amongst the councilmen and, and the public to have input. You know, one, one of the councilmen voted nay for the budget, but he didn't give any areas to, to potentially save. So you can, you know, my thing is, if you, if you vote no for something, explain it. Or give, give options, right? Come forth with some options, rather than saying, "Hey, that's too hot. That's too much." What, what do we need? Where, where can we save that? What are, what, where in, in that role, in, in the role of a councilman, if you're going to make a statement as, if you're gonna deny something or decline something, you, you should be able to come forward and say.
Thirty seconds.
This is where I think you should save. Thank you.
Kevin.
Some of our, well, we'll be back up. We have had several years of minimum budget growth. Two percent, maybe three percent. This year is surprising. It is, it's huge. And when you look at the budget, we're not spending anything more unnecessary stuff. In fact, I think we cut quite a bit out of public works to repair our maintenance schedule to replace vehicles. A lot of that is salaries. Just, for example, the police department, which we have been very blessed to have level-headed officers in a fully staffed department. And it's keeping Newport safe. They were also, we could not find a municipality that was making as little as they were. We're not talking one or two dollars. We're talking a lot, a lot less. And why these guys stayed with Newport, it's dedication, in my mind. You know, they could have got a $10,000 hiring bonus and gone someplace else. So we do try to keep the salaries down, but as I said, this year, we had to bump them up. The one thing that can really positively affect our tax rate is business. But business isn't gonna come here if a city doesn't have a good police department. If the city can't maintain its roads, if it looks like a hole in the wall. We've gotta do what we can, not only to keep it functional, but plan ahead. And that takes money. You know, just like anything else. If you plan on a vacation next year, you start saving today. And that's what Newport is doing.
Thirty seconds.
One quick thing, and, and Rick mentioned this. The department, the, excuse me, the Gardner Park, the playground, if we had gone with a grant, that would have transferred ownership to that one section. Rather than lose control of that, the city is undertaking it for itself. That's an additional expense, but we're doing it for generations.
Okay. Rick.
In, in the world of nonprofit fundraising, it's typical to go into a nonprofit organization that's in, that's in crisis. And they wanna know what you're gonna do to solve their problem tomorrow. And I have a good friend who's been a consultant in nonprofit fundraising for years, who says, "I can't." "I can't help you with that. Everything I can offer you is called, is a get rich slow campaign." Because what you've got to do is build the foundation and that takes time. You build up a donor base, people who are committed. And eventually you begin to see the organization come back to life and become healthy again. I suspect we've got a similar problem here. What we've got to do here, we've got a problem, right? We've got a, a six mile square city that is functionally landlocked. There's not a lot of room for development. And so the question is, where can we build out our city in order to build up our grand list? Because that in the long run is the only thing that's going to relieve the pressure on the, the increasing level of expense to maintain the city. So, you know, we've got, what we do have is a downtown that has lots of opportunity in it. And if we can begin with the idea of creating some mix of market rate and, and appropriately scaled housing for lower income folks in our downtown area and begin to move those, move folks into our downtown. We have studies that suggest that, uh, when someone lives in a walkable scaled city, they spend forty percent of their disposable income within walking distance of where they live. And their, the value of their home goes right on the grand list. The value of whatever building they're living in is going to the grand list. And as we build up that grand list, other businesses begin to thrive because there's more and more need. So the only way I know to do this is to get serious about the long-term development opportunity we have in this community, which is mostly located within a ten-minute walk of where we're sitting tonight.
I absolutely agree with Rick. We have certain fixed costs that come into our budget every year that we seemingly can't do a whole lot about. Maybe it's time to venture out and start looking at, uh, insurance costs for the city employees. I, I don't know, off the top of my head, but there are fixed costs we really can't do anything about. I think a better discussion with the, the heads of the departments when they come to city council and allowing the city council members to actually ask the questions with a budget that is a little bit easier to understand than what we see currently. Uh, I, I'm going to say that I think that our, uh, comptroller, programs director Becky Therian does a phenomenal job, but it is a very difficult to understand budget. And so we need to have a little bit more understanding of where all the pieces and parts fit. We need to, to look at some of those fixed costs. Is there anything we can do? Uh, we know that there are water and sewer budgets that are going to have, we are going to have to really dig in and do something with the water and sewer rates this year. It has to be done. Mr. Johnson has said that. It's going to take some difficult choices right now. But as Rick said, we have to move forward with, with creating a space here in downtown i- in the larger Newport area that is going to create a bigger tax base. You can't, you can't continue to lose taxable properties uh, and, and, and then wonder how come your taxes are going up. We just can't. And we're going to be going through another, uh, tax assessment in the next few years, uh, which is going to look very different because of the things that have happened over the last three, four years. And, and we'll see where we come out on the other end of that. I think now is the time to start paying attention. And, and it is, it's not going to be easy. Uh, we're, we are, I think, a little bit stuck right now. And it is going to take some really hard work, uh, over the next three to five years and into the future to get us where we need to be.
Uh, but can you repeat the question so I can, there was a lot of information, so good information.
Scrolling backwards. One minute. No worries.
I just want to stay in the scope of the question.
So it's, given the increasing tax rates, what do you see as unnecessary factors leading to that tax rate increase? And what could be done to reduce the tax burden?
Okay. Uh, certainly as identified, uh, there, there are certain rates are just inherent. They're going to be what they are. Right now, we, we need to pay employees. Uh, we need to pay insurances. We need to pay, uh, our own services and stuff and provide that. So that costs dollars. And unless dollars are coming in, we're putting out more than what's coming in. And it was identified at one time at a meeting that I think every quarter we're bleeding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around that. I think what the, the treasurer said. So I mean, that, someone's in that number, if I remember correctly. So we definitely need to have a revenue coming in. Uh, these services cost money. And when we, the, the services go up and the, the cost of living goes up, everything goes up. Um, you set rates. Now underwater, hopefully with the metering stuff, that could help factor in a lot of potential lost revenue. Um, it, it certainly could help other people as well. Um, but we just need to find things and areas where we can trim the fat. And I dare not to try to, to, to unencourage any of our employees by threatening their, their, their pay, their insurances and stuff, because we want them to be happy employees as well, too. So we, these are things we have to factor in. Definitely bring in more business and we have to have housing. We have to have housing for all, uh, classes as well, too. Um, and a- again, we need to bring them into the area because walking certainly is a potential, um, excuse me, uh, revenue there, disposable income. That's it. I agree.
Okay, so the next question is there has been some conversation about there being conflicts of interest within, um, with people running for council and sitting on the council. Um, we actually had a number of submissions about this, so I figured this would be a really good one to address. Do you feel that there is a conflict of interest? How should it be dealt with if, if somebody with a conflict of interest sits on the board? Um, and how is it being dealt with in other cases similar to this? So in this case, we would start with Kevin.
There would appear to be a conflict of interest. And I'm sorry to say it, Rick, but if you're on the board, primarily because, not that you're, you're on, uh, the Newport City Development, but that you're a director of it and that the city allocates money to that. And I, I don't know you very well, but I know you're, what I do know, you're a man of integrity. So you would remove yourself from the discussions, which is unfortunate because you have a knowledge, a lot of knowledge and development. So it would, i- it's unfortunate, it's a possible asset we would be losing. Our new city manager is, appears to be very confident, bright and able to get grants. And I've, I've heard a lot of talk about the city doing that. And our previous city manager has done that in the past. I think if we had our city manager working with you in your capacity, at Newport City Development, Downtown Development would be great and forestall any and expected grievances about conflict of interest.
Thirty seconds?
That's about it.
Okay. Rick?
There are good people in this room who disagree with my assessment about this. So I'll just note that and say, um, I, I disagree with the assessment, Kevin. You know, my judgment is that the reason a policy exists to address conflict of interest is because anyone who is active, especially in a small community like this one, in their community or in community organizations, has the potential to face conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict of interest when they serve in public office. And so the tw- the question really is, as you say, one of integrity and trust and transparency. And, you know, there are two instances that I can think of at this point where there could be potential for conflict of interest in my particular situation. It's true that Newport City Downtown Development, for the last several years, has been receiving thirty thousand dollars a year as a line item in the operating budget of the city to support the operating budget of Newport City Downtown Development. It used to be that that was a very significant portion of our budget. Even three years ago, that, that represented over fifty percent of NCDD's budget. This year, our budget is nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it represents about twenty percent of our overall budget. And I take a salary from that organization, forty thousand dollars a year. And there is clearly a potential for at least the appearance of a conflict of interest there. And I would certainly turn to the, uh, the, the city attorney for council about how to deal with that appropriately. Similarly, the Newport City Downtown Development has been working hard to build capacity to be a genuine partner to the city of Newport in actually making the long-term plans and implementing them for the downtown development that we so desperately need in this community. And so, um, there are certainly going to be opportunities for the city to work cooperatively with New, with NCDD. And NCDD take on specific roles in which they will have to be partnered with the mayor and council because NCDD can't represent the city in any way. We have to do the work with and for the city. And thereto, if we come back and it appears that there's any potential for, um, a conflict of interest that could be problematic, I would expect to work with the city attorney to determine how best to approach that conflict. So, you know, the, the real question is, what is the compelling interest in the city in electing me at this moment in time? And I think the answer is, we need some people who really have a grasp on how to actually do the work to move our city forward on the long-term development questions. And there are plenty of other communities across the state that have dealt with similar potential conflicts. Right now, the mayor of St. Albans is also the director of the Franklin County Development Corporation, which clearly has something to do with how the ca- the city operates there. There have been other designated downtown directors before me across the state who have served on select boards and councils as well. So it's not a new problem. It's nothing new under the sun. And if we deal with it openly and respectfully and transparently, we can get help from our city attorney to manage it.
All right.
So I think it's been said that in a small town, which we are, that just about anybody that has anything to do with the city, volunteering or employment or whatever, may find themselves in a conflict of interest. And I think as Rick has said, what becomes important is how we handle that. And I, and, and that's what I think we have to do. We have to use our city attorney. We have to look at our, uh, at our charter. Uh, we know that from the charter, and I have it here in front of me, that there are actually certain positions in the city that cannot serve on the city council, period. And, and it could be, uh, you know, any of us at this table that, that could in a capacity be, would have to recuse themselves, would have to step down depending on where they are. Uh, our members of our fire department are not allowed to sit on the city council depending on their role. Uh, and the charter specifically says, um, excuse me, the collector of taxes, superintendent of streets and waterworks, a city attorney, board of fire wardens consisting of one chief and a first and second assistant engineer, and such other officers not herein otherwise provided as are required by law. So, you know, this is really specific in our charter that it says that these particular people cannot serve on the city council. And what we have to do though, is at this point, we have to look at those people that are interested. We have to look at the people who are willing to serve. And, and we have to step into what Rick said, into the conversation of how do we really make it work? Is it possible to make it work? And, and that's where we need to go.
All right. Carl?
I am, I am like everybody else, uh, see, hear, um, and experience things here in Newport. Conflict of interest. If you're going to elect me to be on the, the council, you expect trans- transparency and truth from me. And again, uh, I'll, I'll give it to you. The facts are what they are. We can't take away what we have been going through a tumultuous time, transitional, uh, with administrations and stuff. We've got enough to deal with. And why would we want to add on to that building block of problems and, and potentials uh, by adding to that? Rick, I will identify that you are very good from what I see and experience at your job. That, and like I, I alluded to earlier, I think would do you much a disservice by coming up to the council because your scope would be so choked down where you would be less effective, I think, than in your position. Up in the old adage is why would someone making five hundred thousand want to come to a five-dollar job? You know, it's just, what is the rea- you can help better there. Your scope is much, uh, broader and that's the whole point of the council seeking your services and expertise. Cause you can focus more like you identified passions, right? One, like three times, that you're really passionate about. And I feel that and that's where you should continue going with that. And that brings worth to your organization, but also helps in partnership, brings worth to me. And conjuntively together, that's where we can work. But how much of the pie do you really want? And that's where everybody perceives the conflict of you're going to be in every aspect, pretty much. You'd have to recuse yourself from many items on that agenda. Where you'd be much effective not on the council. And that wouldn't put us at potentially a disadvantage or perceived disadvantage. It's no disrespect to you as a person. It's, it's, it's not even politics. It's just simple, I don't want to have to question someone who's going to make decisions. I mean, we're, which Rick are we getting? Are we getting NBD or are we getting council Rick? And that's where we as a community are struggling. Not that we devalue you.
Thirty seconds?
We just think that that probably is not the best scenario for Newport. And that's Newport's best interest. You, it's, your, your group is good.
I'm going to give Rick two minutes to respond to that.
I wasn't even finished.
Oh, okay, you, you have ten seconds then.
Oh, all right. The other conflict, again, I agree, would be on the fire department because you'd be direct, um, violation in that regard to the charter. And that's it. It's definitely not a personal thing. It's just these are the facts that were set up well before us.
Time? All right. Let me just set this to two.
No need.
Okay. Would you like to respond to that?
I can do it in ten seconds. I started by saying there are people who I respect in this, in this room tonight, who I know disagree with me. And I know, Carl, that you're one of them. We've had this conversation. And I feel like I've, I've laid out my case for why I feel it's important for me to move forward and, uh, with this candidacy. So I appreciate your concerns.
All right. Andrew?
So I'm, I'm just going to speak for, for myself. I as a member of the fire department, uh, obviously I'm a current officer with the fire department. Um, I understand there may be a conflict, uh, with that, but that is, it's a volunteer position. So I look at that as, I'm going to help you, protect, I'm protecting you. And that's no different than me being, would be on the council. I am work, I'm a servant of the people. And that's what I, that's what I am in both roles. Um, if I need to step down as an officer on the fire department, I, I have no problem absolutely doing that if, if that is what it comes to. But again, I would reach out to the lawyer and, and figure out exactly what, what it is. And the amount of, uh, the, the, the fire department budget versus the city budget is minimal. For starters. So there, and there's only been a couple of votes. There's been, uh, two items that, that I can think of recently, um, that, that came up and that was where the jaws of life needed to be replaced. And then the new fire truck, uh, that, that has been approved. I wa- I served on both of those committees, but I, I obviously would not, uh, in, in a role of being the city, on the city council. But I would not resign from the fire department. I may step down from an officer, but I would not, I would not. Because I, I, fire is my passion. I, I love the fire department. I love serving the people and that's why I would do what I would do. Thank you.
All right. So I actually have gotten through the questions I had written down. I did bring more. I am going to look through some of these because some of them are, um, kind of difficult to just read as is. I am going to look through some of these, because some of them are um, kind of difficult to just read as is. Just give me a second. Okay, so, there are two questions based on complacency with the city charter. Do you feel that the city council is currently in compliance with the city charter? And if not, what would you do to red- remedy the situation?
I've read the city charter in the last month and a half, and there's a lot. To the best of my knowledge, the city council is currently in compliance with the city charter.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Laura?
Uh, I would absolutely agree. According to the city charter, the mayor is can to be considered the CEO of the city. And that mayor acts in conjunction with the, um, I call them select board. Uh, but it is the whole council. And I absolutely believe that currently, that our city council is acting just as the charter uh, lays it out for them.
Carl?
I believe that we are um, in line. Um, I would challenge everybody, uh, again, it's your duty, to familiarize yourself with the charter. That way you can more accurately um, address situations or concerns, um, alleviate some worries, potentials. Um, I I think we're we're pretty much there. Without going over everything specifically, it's hard to say yes, 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 without having it there to to bounce uh, to contrast, I mean. Um, we're in compliance, and if if not, I think it it may be just as easy as addressing it, and and we should be in compliance. So yes, I I believe we are.
I think that uh, we we are in compliance um, for most of that, uh, the city charter. However, um, I seem to hear a lot of state statutes brought up as well. Um, because a lot of the, a lot of the city charter will default to the state statutes, depending on which section you you actually are in. And um, I think that that is used a lot, uh, more than it needs to be, um, and and vice versa, right? So so if it's, if it's, if we should be following one, it should be, i- it should be that for all of it, right? For for the um, for the city charter, if we're going to follow that, there there shouldn't be going back and forth. It should be laid out. It should be updated, um, and potentially some changes made. Thank you.
We are in compliance with the charter as far as we can be. It's a good document. It's served the city well. Honestly, we need to preserve this in one area, and let's update it. I am, I'm looking at it right now, section fourteen, to regulate and determine the time and or place of bathing in any public waters. I gotta be honest with you, we're not doing that. But there are, there are things in this statute we we need to do. We we should save it. It's part of history, but honestly, folks, we need to update sections of it. Uh, and I I, you know, it's a big project. Don't ask me how you do it, but I'm not going to regulate bathing. So yes, I think we're following the spirit of it, insofar that we can. Thank you.
Tabitha, can I, may I say something?
Yes.
In response to, just to something that um, that Andy said.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make it very clear that the Vermont statutes, title twenty-four, appendix for municipal charters, chapter seven on the city of Newport, is an exact replica of what is in the ver- uh, the city charter of Newport. You can find this at the Vermont statutes online. You can find it also uh, on the city website. It's exact word-for-word document. So when I, so when people cite title twenty-four, chapter seven, it is, it is exact to the ver- to the city charter for the city of Newport. Just want to clarify.
All right. Just looking to see. All papers. Seeing as the city charter requires that a city manager be bonded, would you consider it your duty to be aware of and ensure that this bond was in place at the time of their appointment or reappointment? Uh, or reappointment vote by the council?
I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat the question.
Yep. Seeing as the city char- charter requires that a city manager be bonded, will you, would you consider it your duty to be aware of and ensure that this bond was in place at the time of their appointment or reappointment vote by the council? Start with Laura.
And my answer is absolutely, um, because in the city charter, under um, section forty, under the city manager, it does say that the city manager shall execute a bond in favor of the municipality for the faithful for port- performance of his or her duties in such sum as may be fixed by the council. And unfortunately, what we've discovered, what has been discovered, is that uh, our city managers have not been bonded. And this becomes a problem if there were ever a situation where, at any point in the past, a financial ha- decision had been made by the city, that the city could have been sued. And if that was not covered by the standard insurance that the city has, that's what the bonds cover. So absolutely positively moving forward, if we're going to run this city based on the charter, that's exactly what we have to do.
Carl?
Uh, across the board, absolutely yes. And again, it's it's our duty uh, as the taxpayer citizens to make sure checks and balances and and fact check, make sure that they are bonded. Um, and make sure that that the bond covers uh, the legalities of of what it needs to. But that's it. I I believe in bonding, because of, they would be handling pretty much everything, uh, and especially the finances. So of course, that, uh, that the mayor should be bonded as well too. They're signing off on the document. Um, per se, uh, each council member individually, I'm not sure. I talked to a bonding company. It says they don't normally do that. Uh, but it was on the recommendation of the mayor that we did that, and they passed the ordinance. So now everybody has to be bonded no matter what. I think that's actually not a bad idea, um, because it would just give security to the taxpayers and the community that we are acting in compliance and and professionalism. Um, so I I, yeah.
I agree. I think, uh, you know, I absolutely, as as everyone gets reelected every year, um, I I, not reelected every year, I mean, every year, as an elected official, you have to renew that. So you need to make sure that that gets renewed. And uh, for any, for anyone new coming on like as a councilman, or a city manager, or as Carl alluded to, the mayor, um, everybody is is now challenged to be bonded. So uh, it should be, you know, that you have ten days to be bonded from election day. So you should be, you you, that's, that's what you, that's a, that's a duty of yourself. But the rest of the council should be policing that as well, to make sure that, hey, you know, everybody, everybody's fulfilled their duty, and now we can move forward. Because obviously, that had not been done in the past, um, and it just needs to be done. Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I, I agree. I had always thought the city manager was in fact bonded. To learn that they weren't is quite shocking. But I think even more than that, we should not only require the bonding, but just each year, yeah, appointed city manager, I am in fact bonded and sign it. So if they're not, they're committing perjury, and you can say, hey, you, that's perjury. You're done. Uh, and it also keeps a record, so that the next person on the council, if they are replaced or whatever, they have as it, okay, this person is bonded. Not to create more paperwork for everybody, but it's nice to be able to have it, to be able to show it to somebody else and say, okay, this is taken care of. But yes, I agree. There should be bonding, especially with the amount of money. And we have seen what happens when towns are faced with a embezzlement or something. Thank you.
Rick?
Yes.
Can I just add one thing? And I just to defend, I think it also should be a part of uh, the the packet released to the public as well too, that document, just to prove so you have for your own records, the accessibility, just to prove for your fact checking, that our elected officials are bonded, and you should have access to that.
All right. Following the release of information, that there were com- there were employee emails deleted from the city's server. One, do you believe it's acceptable for an employee to do that? And two, what would you do to be sure there were processes in place to make sure that data was protected? And in this case, we will start with Carl.
Um, no one should be deleting anything in a public record matter. Um, that belongs to the people. Um, if you're doing that, that that may indicate that there's nefarious things going a- a- abroad about us. Um, and again, these are the things that we're trying to avoid and hurdles we're trying to to go past to to move forward. Um, and with that, I must, the whole question again, I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, basically, just um, in light of the fact that emails had been deleted from the server, what, um, do you believe that is acceptable? And uh, what would you do to make sure policies in place to protect the data?
Absolutely no, it's not acceptable. I believe the city should be charged with hiring um, a tech firm that would uh, offer a secure server. So our information is kept secure and guarded, and that way we can watch who goes in and out, and we can lock people out when they are out of office. So they just can't come in and do these things and change history.
Okay. Andrew?
I believe that uh, they should not be deleted. Um, and there there should be, the city should have a system to back that, right? Regardless, uh, they need to have systems in place where where there's backup, um, if that does happen. Uh, because nobody should be able to go in and delete stuff off the server or any of that ma- nature. Thank you.
Emails, obviously, are part of city public records requests. I just have files. I put them in, keep them all. But I don't know how, a- again, I'm I'm not a techno whiz, but we need to have something where it could be accessed. Um, like if there is a public records request, a a repository where rather than just an email to, hey, councilman Charbonneau, need your emails. There should be ready access at the, at some place in the municipal building. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know how much it would cost, but we do need a central repository.
Rick?
I believe it's inappropriate to erase emails or any other document of the public that belongs to the public. And our emails obviously would as council members. And I trust that there's someone out there who can tell us how to go about ensuring that it's done.
I absolutely agree. Uh, I find it very difficult to understand how uh, someone in the position that deleted those emails actually went ahead with it. It's very disconcerting. And when when the word transparency has been thrown around this table this evening, uh, that to me, uh, falls under the worst error of transpa- era, or maybe uh, decade is the term I should use, of non-transparency that I believe has happened in our city government. And so absolutely, uh, we have to know that there is a way, there has to be a way, to maintain those records. Uh, even in the company that I work for, uh, I, there are files, um, all of my emails, whether whether I think they're public or private are are all on the servers. And I can delete what I want, but they're there. I can guarantee it. And I have to know that as a citizen, or as a council member, that any contact that I have with the city is absolutely pub- going to be public knowledge. And it should remain that way, and it should not be deleted off, from, in any way, shape, or form.
I think actually, at this point, I would, we have probably fifteen minutes. We can open it up. A couple of questions from the public. If people have very specific questions, they want answered that were not answered tonight. You'll have to speak loudly, because we weren't sure how far we would get, and there isn't a mic for the public. Does anybody have questions?
This gentleman here in, yes. Mr. Jay Walsh from Port. Um, seeing as over thirty percent of the population of the city is sixty-five years and over, what would you do to address the issue of senior housing? And then one other quick question, which is even simpler. If you're not elected on the bed, who would you like to see on the?
Well, I think we're gonna deal with the housing. Well, okay, so we have to deal with the housing, because that's one question first. So we're gonna start with Andrew, and we will deal with the housing question.
Perfect. I drew that straw. Um, no, I, to to address the housing issue, I I spoke to that earlier a little bit. Um, we have to obviously bring housing to the city. Um, I know there's, there's a lot of of plans in place, or or work, and people are working on some plans um, for the space block, uh, different things. But I do know that that is a huge concern, um, for for elderly housing. Um, because we just, we've lost, over the last few years, we've lost some uh, locations. So that is, that is a big piece of uh, what we need for housing. Uh, I know there's there, there's some rural edges doing a project or starting a project here. Uh, we need to bring in all sorts of housing, not just, not just the uh, elderly, for for the elderly, but for uh, everyone, right? The the hospital needs um, staff. Everybody needs staff, but there's no housing. So we have to have housing of, to to fit every generation, not just the elderly. And and uh, just one, just one person, um, there's too slot. So I I guess, I I don't know where you're going with that, but there's there, I'm just trying to figure that out. So why wouldn't you?
If you weren't the one, if somebody else, would you?
Right?
Who would you, who would you like to see on the council?
Who would you like to see in your stead?
Mr. Charbonneau.
Hey.
All right. Kevin?
Um, in terms of senior housing, nu- Um, in terms of senior housing, Newport, a few years back, and I, I don't know what came of it, was rated by AARP as, uh, like senior friendly. Age friendly, thank you. Uh, and that's something we really need to, to keep up and that's also a resource that can tell us or show us, these are things you need to do to make your city more viable for, uh, aging people. Uh, in terms of fulfillment, we do need appropriate senior housing. We can assist and, and make that happen through, you know, support. Now financially, unfortunately, we don't have money. Uh, but there is, uh, a tip, a tax increment financing. Um, there's zoning that can be, you know, work with them. Uh, could definitely make it appealing and see if they need any, uh, infrastructure upgrades, maybe the road needs to be widened, something of that nature where we can, can do that. And then, uh, as far as voting for somebody else, Mr. Trushak. Well, thank you. I didn't feel compelled.
So, the challenge of housing for senior folks in the community has ripple effect that's actually impacting housing across the board in our community. It's crisis because, not just because our seniors need good livable housing, but also because currently seniors who have lived here all their lives are occupying three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes that ought to be becoming available. If there were, if we had a healthy system and they could be moving into smaller, uh, homes, then there would actually be more homes for, for families on the market here. So it's got this kind of ripple effect and it absolutely needs to be a part of our, our long-term strategy, whatever we're gonna put together for how we're gonna develop, not just the downtown. There are some other key sites across the city that could conceivably be reworked for senior housing. And it's gonna take intentionality to get us to an actual plan and then to follow through on that plan step by step. It's not an overnight prospect. And I'm just gonna, I'll disappoint you, Jay, and probably some other people in the room as well. I refuse to answer the question the way it's framed and the reason is actually really important to me, which is that we have a situation in which our community is pretty deeply divided. And I don't think it's helpful for us to try and choose upsides. My intention, whether I'm elected or not, is to work cooperatively with everyone else sitting at this table and with the current members of the council and with our mayor and with our new town manager and with the business and residential community here in Newport to drive the city forward in every positive way we possibly can.
Alright. Lori?
Senior housing, um, is definitely an issue. And I think that, uh, what Rural Edge is doing, uh, upon the, the property at the convent, uh, is gonna be one possibility that they're moving into. But, uh, we definitely have to continue looking at, at how to do this in our community. Um, I have spoken with Heidi Eichenberger, who actually brought a plan into Newport, has purchased land and then didn't get any support. Now, I don't know all the reasons behind that. I have spoken with her a little bit about it, I don't know if the project was too big or just the wrong thing. I, I really don't know, but it was un, it's unfortunate because, uh, I understand that this could have been, uh, something really great, even if it had only started small, because of the way that it was done. Um, and I understand that, that she has been successful with that in Canada, but there's a whole different mindset there and there were businesses behind her from what I understand. Now, I, I'm not gonna, to say one way or the other if that would have been great here or not, but we definitely have to revisit that, uh, as part of, like Rick said, with the overall plan of what we're doing. Uh, median income and senior housing, we have to have some, uh, better options for our young people and for our seniors when it comes to housing. And, and I just wanna say this, I did have a conversation with actually a local real estate, uh, person who had said to me out loud, I can do just as good a job as our, as Rural Edge if I'm given the right amount of money and the right way to finance it. We can't live on grants alone. Uh, we need to support our businesses who can actually build these and, and some sort of proper financing for them and, and that's what I see as the best. And actually, the phrase that came through my mind was, I'm, I refuse to answer the question on the grounds that it may incriminate me. So thank you, Jay, I appreciate you, but I am not gonna answer the question really for the same reason because I, I wanna really be able to work with all of these people and our current, and our current, um, council members.
Uh, I agree, uh, Rick really identified a, a good phrasing, um, with the ripple effect. Um, the, the seniors do, um, sometimes, as they deservedly so, have worked a long time. Our community was built on the backs of seniors, that's how we got here, and veterans. Um, and as they get older, they, they sometimes don't need the larger accommodations and if we can provide housing communities where they can downsize, that will free up a, a lot of real estate. We still are going to be shorthanded i-in the long run, so it is a time process. Um, but if we do provide transitional places to go to, to free up their homes or different options, it doesn't have to be free up, just an option. Um, and that's it, and, and the loaded dice question? Wow, huh? Um, you know, I think the best way to answer this is we want Newport to be the winner. That's it, I think, uh, everybody in their own right has their own qualities, um, just some circumstances are with them.
All set? Alright, so we have time for two more and I did see the gentleman in the way back, his hand up earlier.
Hi, uh, Scott Brown, live over on the prospect. Um, thank you everybody for, uh, participating, this has been really interesting. Uh, I just wanna make sure the person, the people that I'm voting for can reflect that I was attending my white chair. Um, I don't know if everybody's familiar with the Vermont Declaration of Inclusion, but, um, it's like sort of a grassroots community effort. About a hundred and forty towns out of the two forty-seven have signed on. Um, so I'd just like to read it very briefly and then ask, um, if that came to Newport, would you be willing to support that? The town of Newport condemns racism, welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, disability, socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all its forms, commit to a fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community and will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. Yep, looking forward to hearing your comments.
Kevin, we'll start with you.
Um, I believe that's already part of our contracts and I haven't looked over the, the other personnel policy. I, I believe it's already part of that, that we're very inclusive. Uh, last year, we, our first year, we had the, uh, the pride parade and our place has been very good and accommodating. I mean, they're not profiling or anything of that nature. None of our public works people are doing that. I think we're a very inclusive community and I believe that's already stated a part of the various contracts and policies.
Rick?
So, I'm aware that this declaration has been circulating to various towns. I'm very familiar with the language in it. I've spent a lifetime working in communities that are, uh, outside of dominant culture. This is kind of my, my kick, my, my catch-all phrase for that. And it does seem to me important that our community be on record and the question people typically ask is, well, why should we say it? We're a friendly place. And my answer to that question is, if you have not been outside of the dominant culture, if you are part of the dominant culture, there are all kinds of hidden ways in which people are made to feel unwelcome. So it takes intentionality and effort to name the fact that we are in fact inclusive in today's world. So I'm all for the, the statement and then I'm even more interested in what it takes for all of us as a community to do the work together of learning about the ways to make this community genuinely welcoming. There have been incidents during my tenure at NCDD where I know of people who have been accosted on the street because of the color of their skin, people yelling epithets at them and swearing at them. There have been incidents where folks who are in the LGBTQIA+, which is the current language that's being used, I forgive the letter soup, it's just the way folks choose to be identified. Folks in that, in that who identify as LGBTQIA+ in this community have felt targeted or at the very least kind of misunderstood and, uh, and, um, and hidden in this community. And it seems to me it takes intentionality to create an open community where all of us and our children, who by the way are often in some of these categories, will feel welcome here and feel like they can stay.
Lori?
So, uh, I have been accused in this political season of being a homophobe. And I wanna make it very clear that, uh, I have a very deep faith, very personal faith. However, that does not keep me from recognizing the community at large and working with people across the board. So I would need to take a little bit more, uh, deeper look at the declaration to make sure it really covers, because it, I, you know, let's be honest, I was just discriminated against by someone who called me a homophobe. And I don't, I mean, that, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Rick, and it is a, it, because I live in that mainstream, that dominant culture, like you said. But if we're gonna accept everybody, we need to accept everybody. And I am, I am more than willing to have that discussion, so.
Carl?
My answer is non-climatical, yes. Um, I will never, ever discriminate against anybody and take a potential of discriminating against a potential developer, business person, whoever, they're in all demographics. We should be welcoming everybody, period.
I, I support that as well. Um, I, I feel that it's going to take, um, more than just the council, it's gonna take the community to do that. Um, and it's gonna take the, a strong council, regardless of who's, who's in there. Um, they're gonna need support from, from not only just the council, the mayor, the manager, uh, city staff, I know the city staff is, is already like Kevin alluded to, um, they're, they're on board. Um, and I, I think it's just gonna take, it's gonna take some time. Um, it's not gonna happen overnight, I'm sure, uh, as far as the community, but, but I do support that. Thank you.
Uh, and there was a third question too over here, yes?
So, I'm gonna go on the lead to you guys a little bit. So the city charter, um, under chapter forty, um, says that the city manager is to work at the direction and supervision of the council. And in October, on October sixteen, an amended city manager job description was created. And in that job description, there was a footnote. And the footnote said that because the mayor is a member of the council, that wherever the term council is used, um, it also indicates, you know, the, the, it's the mayor as well, so. And, but the council is de, is defined in the charter as the board of aldermen plus the mayor acting jointly. So when this footnote goes into the city manager's job description and it says that the word council and mayor are interchangeable, if they're not, they're two different entities. And so what has happened is that-
Can you, can you please state your question? We do wanna get through them.
Yep, the, the city manager's job description now violates the charter because it makes the city manager answer, you know, directly to the mayor or directly to the council. And so I wanna know how you guys are gonna run with that.
Okay, Rick, we'll start with you.
Short answer is, I believe that the healthiest possible situation is one in which the mayor and council are directing the activity of the city manager and the, and therefore understanding what's going on with the city staff. In an ideal situation, which I think we are on the verge of having, we have a city manager who has a cooperative relationship with the mayor and council and vice versa, and we're all pulling in the same direction, which has been sorely lacking for some time now. So however we got to this moment, my commitment from this moment forward is to welcome Jonathan with open arms on March eleventh and then to work as cooperatively with him as we possibly can because the only way we're gonna move this city to a different plot, space, is by working together.
Everybody needs, everybody needs to answer the same question. Lori?
So the charter says that the administration of all fiscal, prudential, and municipal affairs of said city and the government thereof shall be vested in the mayor and board of aldermen. The board of aldermen shall consist of four aldermen who shall elect one of their number president of said board. The mayor and the board of aldermen in their joint capacity shall be called the city council. Under section forty, it says, "The council may, when the city so votes at any annual meeting, appoint a city manager who shall be the administrative head of the municipal government under the direction and supervision of the council and who shall hold office at the pleasure of the council." So I read that, I am, I have not read, uh, the actual official, um, job description. However, when I look at this, it very distinctly says that the, uh, the mayor and the council, the ma, mayor and the board of aldermen are called the council. So I would have to take a look at the job description, but I believe that in this case, the, uh, until I read it, that the, um, city, and it does say that the city manager will work with the mayor farther down and I apologize that I've not gotten all of this directly, but the city manager does work with the mayor to prepare certain things for the council, so.
Carl?
Uh, correct. Um, basically as a whole, the council, uh, consists of the, the four, uh, council and the mayor as the spokesperson. Uh, that does not make the mayor the boss, it does not make the mayor the ruler. It makes the mayor simply only the spokesperson for the council and the liaison to the city manager, period. And when she brings that information back to the council, it's not to act upon separately from the council. This is a council-based administration, not some tap dancing and seize control of Newport. It is about the council, not one person and their drive and direction and their will.
All set? Andrew?
Uh, Lori read, she just read the city charter there, so, um, obviously, I, to follow the city charter would be to give, the city manager would work for the council in conjunction with the mayor, not just the mayor. Thank you.
Kevin?
To be honest, I, we're splitting hairs, uh, I don't know why it was added or really everything, the repercussions. I mean, it's the council as a whole. Uh, whether that was added just for, 'cause the mayor and the city manager will set the agenda, was, is that the intent? I, I would hope that's the only thing because again, it's the council as a whole that would hire or fire the, the city manager. So I, again, I, I'm, I'm clear why that, that was differentiated. Yeah.
And we have one more question and then we will go into closing comments, yes?
Kitty, upper chase, now do we have Newport? Here's my question. Can you briefly describe a Newport moment? A time when you looked around and you thought, yes, this is the Newport I want to live in. This is the Newport I want to create.
Laurie, you start.
Please? Every single time I went to a community meeting, when we looked at what Newport could be, that was the moment. When we said, hey, let's build a great bridge diagonally across the South Bay. When we said, there are six zones in the city of Newport and could we actually make a difference by picking one? And then the next one, and then the next one. And when we met for community matters and in this room, in this whole space, and said, what do we want from Newport? And within months, we had a community commons meeting that met every month on a Wednesday night. And we got actively involved. We understood what was going on with EB5. And then after EB5, that was huge. And how we could, what we were doing to gear up for it and what we had to do to come down out of it. And that is every single moment, that is what I see. And that's why I carry this passion to sit on the council to finally do something. And I can guarantee you, even if I don't make it on the council, I'm not going away. And he knows that.
Carl.
I'm not going away neither. And you all know that. Okay, the question again now? No, I was only kidding, I was only kidding. It was only kidding. I have actually a prime example. I've been wanting to share this for quite a while. It didn't occur to me to the very first time I put a sign out, that I put a second sign out, then I put a third sign out, and I put twenty signs out. And what I'm trying to allude to is each place where I put a sign, I go to every day, wipe my sign, check my sign, but observe my community. And that's that blessing of it. I get to see every day what we normally take for granted. I get to see the people walking down the street. I get to see people perusing little shops and stuff. We have the stores and stuff. How, what they're doing in their yards, how they're playing with their kids. That's the Newport I want to embrace. I encourage you to drive by every one of my signs and just take a little broader look around there and just appreciate what you see at each stop. That's the Newport I want. That's the one I want to influence. That's the one I want to embrace. And I wish you'd embrace me.
All right. Andrew.
I'd like to just, a shout out to Andrea and Vero for Wednesdays on the Waterfront. The reason being is, in the last two years, that's really, or this last year, it really took off. To see the amount of people, to see the food trucks. And I know Rick had a big hand in that, and kudos to you down here on the Saturdays. I think that's huge. It's much needed. There's a lot of participation. When we close the street down to do a street dance here, that's huge. I'd love to see that. I'd love to see more of that. And that's, thank you.
Kevin.
I agree. There's, community members have done horrendous things. Andrew mentioned Wednesdays on the Waterfront. The Saturday nights at the Gateway. There is so much happening within the community. But that happens other places too. I'll tell you what makes Newport good. When we leave here, when we go outside or whatever, we may have different opinions. You may say, there's no way in hell you're getting my vote, whatever. But it doesn't matter because you're still going to be nice to that person. You're gonna hold the door. Oh, you show her the money, here, here's a copy. That's unique to Newport. It happens in small towns. This is the largest place I've seen it happen. It's the combination of the bigger events. Those are great, but daily, your interactions with people.
And Rick.
I could do so many of these, but what comes to mind tonight is, over the last year, I've been getting to know Barbara Malloy, who is, some of you know, one of the last standing members of the Memphir Magog Historical Society, though we are bringing that back to life, I might add. And I was visiting with Barbara, one of my first visits, about this time last year, a little later in the spring maybe. And I was looking through pictures with her. And there was a picture of a parade in nineteen eighty-six with Memphri, the sea monster, walking down the street. And I said to Barbara, I wish this still was around. And she said, oh, I've got it in the basement. And I said, would you be willing to let us put this, put Memphri in the pride parade at the end of June? And she said, well, you know, I wouldn't want to do anything undignified. Couldn't he be dignified? And so we agreed that Memphri would be in the pride parade and he'd have a colorful scarf around him. And we did that. It was wonderful. Hundred and eighty people in the parade. It was amazing. A great day. But then, the better moment was about a month later, she gave us permission to use Memphri again for the Memphir Magog Festival, which was designed to kind of bring back the old Aqua Fest. And it was combined with the Kingdom Swim the end of July. And so I went out on the boat, out on the Northern Star, to kind of, normally, we would have been out looking at the course last summer with the water. I was just out with my swimmer as a kayak support person. And while I'm out there, I get word by phone that the people who had said that they would be in the Memphri costume were unavailable. Somebody got sick and I don't remember. I guess they were all exposed to COVID or something. And so there was a family on the boat, visiting from, I don't remember where, with a bunch of kids. And I said, hey, would you guys like to be in a parade tomorrow morning? And they were like, really? We get to be in a parade? They were staying in an Airbnb here in town. And so they came, I think it was later that afternoon, actually. They came back and we got them, we all agreed we would meet down at the parking lot here behind the municipal building. And we got them all lined up. And we did this wonderful zigzagging down the street with Memphri nodding his head at everybody. And when we got to the end, Barbara was seated in a lawn chair in front of the visitor center. And we paused and Memphri kind of leaned over and nuzzled her a little bit with his head. And then as we took off the costume, I introduced Barbara to these, to this family with these kids from somewhere else. And it was just a beautiful moment, right? The best of bringing together what Newport has been and welcoming new people into the community. And I love it. And we can do lots more.
All right. So we are going to start our closing comments. And so we'll start with Carl. You have three minutes.
Okay. I come to you again asking for your support. I've been very clear, very open. By now, most of you know who I am and really, truly what I'm about. I've never, ever swayed one way or another. I've always been about Newport. It's about staying true to myself and to my community. I believe in the organizations around here. I think we need to embrace community leaders. And that can alleviate a lot of stress and pressures. Certainly at council meetings, where that information at the council meeting can be disseminated and discussed. So I would encourage that. I do things, what I call boots on the ground. I've been, I've had homeless people in my home. I feed them. I do these things. I don't go to organizations and start doing, what's the best way of saying it? Organizations, stuff like that. I don't do that. I get on the ground and I do things. But I also am a capacity where I would encourage people to do that and identify them. I can communicate with people. Sometimes people find me difficult, as Ben alluded to. But sometimes I don't really take kindly to people trying to pull the wool over my eyes and I hold them accountable. And sometimes people don't like that. I don't go about my life like that. I'm really a nice guy and I'm about Newport. And that's really it. I'm the average you. I'm the great commenter. I'm no more better than you and I'm no lesser than you. I'm right there, right where I should be. A community member who really cares. And my walk and my talk are actually in line. Thank you.
As I've mentioned earlier, it's all about complete transparency, accountability, and being able to have the tough conversations. I honestly know that I am that person. I know that the need is there for change amongst the council, obviously. And, you know, there needs to be some unity involved with that, obviously. And again, if you guys feel there's a need for change, I'm your vote. Thank you very much.
Kevin.
Going forward, I'd like to see, finish up on some of the things that we've started. Financial water towers, sever our need for water from Derby. Get that so we can get development there. Without it, we're limited in our development. As the bandstands remodel or redone, let's expand our focus of what it can be used for. Not just watching baseball, but as Barton does theirs, perhaps we can use it for community events, concerts, shows, whatever. Repair what we've said we're going to repair, the park, playground. Work with the rec committee and see where we can put the splash pad. Put in the teen center. Groups of individuals are working on that. See what we can do as a city to facilitate that. And one last thing, I won't mention it, nobody's going to want to hear it. We need to look, not this year or next, probably within the next ten years or so. We need to look for a well. We cannot have a well within spitting distance of the dump. And that's going to take, got to research the water tables. Which way is water flowing? Are we going to drill in someplace that's going to be contaminated two years from now? These are infrastructure things. We need to keep Newport viable for our generation and the next. Part of that is cleaning up the mess from previous generations, making sure we don't make things worse, and improving it for future generations. It's not grandiose, I'm sorry. But it's what we need to do, what we're empowered to do, and what we're limited to do per the charter. Thank you.
Rick.
Two thousand eight, Kitty and I were invited to become the co-directors of a small ninety guest room conference center in the Lower Hudson Valley, about thirty-five miles north of New York City. It's owned by the National Presbyterian Church. It had been badly neglected for thirty years. There wasn't a roof on the property that wasn't leaking. We literally would have to move our guests' beds to one side and put a bucket down with a rag in the bottom so it wouldn't go plink-plink all night long. The windows were bad. The place was sucking energy like crazy. It had a one point three million dollar budget and it was hemorrhaging about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And the church had no interest and no commitment to spend the money that it would have really taken to turn it around. And we spent the next twelve years slowly, methodically, turning it around anyway. By the time we left, there wasn't a roof on the property that wasn't a metal roof that we had constructed using a machine we bought to make our own metal roofing for that property. We did it for half as much as it might otherwise have cost. The new windows had all gone in. We were using a third the energy we'd been using when we started and we were seeing at least twice as many guests on an annual basis. We can do this work. It's nothing flashy. It's all about building team spirit and committing to do the work together for the long haul and not getting distracted by flashy objects along the way. And that's my commitment. And one way or another, whether I'm elected or not, we are committed, Kitty and I, to this community. I intend to go nowhere. I want to retire in this community, hopefully around ten years from now, maybe a little more. And I want to be a part of it because I believe in all that it has to offer. I love the lake. I love the outdoors. I love the community spirit. I love the grit and the determination and the resilience and the odd mix between I am self-sufficient and I can do my own thing and when my neighbor needs something, I am on top of it immediately. It's a remarkable culture. And I am so glad to be a part of it and looking forward to being a part of it with all of you for a very long time to come.
All right.
So I'll just say this. It's time to look at where we're going. And it's time to put, I'm just going to say it, the last ten years in the past. It's time to stop nitpicking. It's time to support our council from a, from a community perspective. So no matter where I sit, that's what my goal is going to be. We need to support one another. I am not going to agree with every person in this room on every issue, but I am willing to have the hard conversations and see where it can get us because I think for most of us, we can probably meet somewhere in the middle with a little bit of give and take and take the next step forward. And I really am interested in what happens to Newport. And now is the time for some change. As I've said before, we have a mayor who is, is working very hard to get us to where we need to go in those first steps of it. But if, but if we have the community not supporting her, we're not going to go anywhere. And if we have a council that's not supporting her, we're not going to go anywhere. And we need to, that's what we need. We need to work collaboratively, no matter how we feel on different subjects. Because we're looking at Newport. We're looking at the lake. We're looking at our economic survival. We're looking at making a good community for our future and for our children's future. And like Rick said earlier, you know, it's incredible that we actually have young people moving into our community because they like it here, you know? And that's what we want. That's what we want to keep. We have great schools. We have a great hospital. We have a great community. And it is really important for all of us to come together and continue to move Newport forward.
All right, folks. Thank you all for coming tonight.